Welcome, everybody. Glad you're here tonight with us for the February 2013 Pikeville Independent School Board Meeting. And we're going to open up with a word of prayer from our board member Greg Tackett. Let's bow our heads.
Let's pray. Most precious and heavenly Father, we just come to you, first of all, dear Lord, to thank you for who you are. And dear Lord, we also thank you for this school system and the staff that's here tonight, dear Father, our teachers and administrators and so forth. Dear Father, we just thank you for each one of those. We just pray, dear Father, that the things that we do here and say here tonight would just be all to glorify your name and to benefit our children, dear Father, because that's why we're all here, to see that they grow and are educated and be able to come out in our communities and be good citizens and stewards, dear Father. And we pray all this in your son's most precious and heavenly name. Amen.
Okay, we'll begin our meeting with student achievement. And Mr. Green is going to introduce.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Myers. We have one new staff member I'd like to introduce to everyone, Ms. Ashley Prater. Would you please stand? Ms. Prater is the new junior high mathematics teacher at Pikeville High School, so certainly want to welcome her aboard.
Nice having you.
Want to say welcome to her and also under student and staff recognition. On February the 6th, I received a letter from the Kentucky Board of Education Chair, David Karam, and also Commissioner Terry Holliday. Dear Superintendent Green, on behalf of the Kentucky Board of Education and Kentucky Department of Education, congratulations on Pikeville Independent earning District of Distinction designated under Kentucky's Unbridled Learning College and Career Readiness for All Accountability System. Your district is part of an elite group of eight districts statewide with an overall score at the 95th percentile or higher. What a tremendous accomplishment. Achieving the District of Distinction designation took hard work on the part of your students, staff, parents, and community. We ask that you pass along our appreciation and accolades to those who contributed to attain this honor. Your district stands as a model for others in the state. Both the board and the department are extremely proud of your success with the district, and it is realized because it means that everyone is focused on and committed to ensuring all students graduate college and career ready. Well, you'll notice that we received a banner here that's hanging concerning this designation of schools of distinction, but this is, when you consider across the Commonwealth, there's 174 school districts. Only eight districts receive this designation. That's less than the 5% there. Of course, seven of the eight districts with independent school districts. Now, when we mention where this credit should go and these accolades should go, of course, want to thank our students and our parents in the community, but many, many of the staff that are responsible for this banner and our district receiving this are here tonight. So, we want to say thank you to each of you. Concerning our district being a model, the commissioner pointed out that, or mentioned that, the shining star here in eastern Kentucky and appreciate each and every one of your efforts in helping make that so. So, just want to thank you. We've got a couple more students coming in, want to welcome them, but also thank each of you, thank you for being here tonight. There's no doubt in my mind that the other seven districts that are mentioned on this elite level are working just as hard as we are to try to fine tune or to improve for students each day. And, of course, tonight is an example of your dedication. We want to say thank you. If we're receiving this award and we're one of the top 5%, we look forward to hearing from you tonight and celebrating your hard work and efforts. And, of course, that went out in the invitation to all staff, but not only want to thank you, but that low-lying fruit's gone. We've already picked that low-lying fruit as to what's easy to make those huge gains because at the level you're performing, it takes intense focus and want to thank you for your hard work there. Dr. Myers.
Move down to our principal's report first in the elementary, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, so we'll start with that, and soon as the elementary completes, Mr. Roken give his report and introduce what's going on next.
I knew that I'd be given the task of beginning this. I thought about what I wanted to say, and I'm not going to talk long because, of course, there's several people that needs to talk. You guys have some things you need to put? Ms. Cardy, I promise I'm not going to talk long. But I do want to say this, I think it could be really easy for us tonight to lose focus as to why we're here. And I think that we need to understand that we're here because we are a very successful district. And we're very proud of what our teachers do, what our students do in the classroom every day. And, of course, when you're that type of teacher, like we have represented here this evening, you're always looking for ways to improve. And the goal tonight, of course, and I hope that each and every teacher represented here will speak out and brag on themselves because it's important. But also, will I'm sure, mention ways that in their groups, in their teams, in their grade levels, they are talking about how we can improve. I think I would be remiss if I didn't say this. As we begin our elementary report, you know, we have teachers here, of course, we're tested in grades three through six for state accountability. However, Mr. Roke continually gives us credit for preparing students for them, and I think that everyone here would say that we, without a doubt, have the best primary staff in the state of Kentucky, of preschool through third grade, that sets the precedent, gets our students ready for everything that they accomplish when they graduate Pikeville High School. I'm very proud of our elementary school, I'm very proud of our high school, and I'm extremely proud of these teachers. I don't think anyone here tonight jumped at the chance to talk. They're doing it because they love this district, because they love this, they love their school, and they love students. So, I admire each and every one of you. I want to pass the mic, you know, to Ms. Witt and have her start for the elementary school, but again, it's, you know, we're celebrating success. We're celebrating success that's not matched by anyone in this region. And I want you all to know I'm proud of you for that. I'll pass the mic to Ms. Witt.
I have a cold, so let me apologize first for my voice. And since I thought I might be a little foggy, I've just written what I want to say. Normally, you all know me and know that I wouldn't be reading off of it, my mouth would just be going, but, so. So, thanks for the opportunity to work at Pikeville Elementary and to work for Mr. Jones and Mr. Stumpf. Both are very, very supportive. Also, I'm very blessed to work with so many others that love children and love this district. I have the honor of speaking for many of these teachers. Please know that my fourth grade day is so different from a day in kindergarten or first grade. It's hard to understand unless you actually walk in their shoes. Each grade level has its individual joys and challenges. First, I want to give some general thoughts about math at Pikeville Elementary and how we hope to improve. The new Common Core standards were adopted last year. We spent several days in the summer deconstructing these standards, completing a gap analysis, and noting where skills and concepts had been moved from one grade level to another. Even with a hard copy of the new standards, teachers didn't really know what to expect and had to create and design their own curriculum based on what we used to teach and how we thought the new test questions would be designed. So, we can't thank the board and Mr. Green enough for our new textbooks. Our new text math series called Envision Math is aligned extremely well with the new Common Core standards and focuses on fewer skills per grade level, but offers a much deeper understanding of each. Our old series addressed many, many concepts every day and did not focus on mastery and moved on. Envision includes a technology component that offers four benchmark tests to be given throughout the year. It will grade and analyze test results to determine standards mastered, individual and whole group. We are continuing to explore and grow with these new books. The new Common Core standards are grade-specific for the primary grades. This will be very helpful for each grade because all the old standards in the past only stated what should be mastered by the end of third grade, so it was extremely hard, K-1, 2, it was extremely hard for them to figure exactly what was their responsibility. Now, it is clearly defined what content is to be covered each year. We will continue to use our vertical PLCs to work on addressing gaps and discuss how we can increase rigor in instruction. In addition, we can now set clear beginning and ending expectations in math for students at each grade level. This will better keep parents informed of their child's progress. The math PLC group, excuse me, has also discussed the possibility of exit criteria for each grade level. We are also very, very thankful for Leslie Cunningham. She services all Tier 3 students K through 2. This is approximately 20 kids. Leslie gives small group instruction or individual instruction to these students twice a week. In the past, however, she could see each student three times a week, but with the increase in numbers, now time only allows her to see each child twice. We also have some new RTI computer programs, and we're still testing the waters, trying to find exactly what we think is the best fit for our RTI. And Mr. Jones ordered something last week, I think, or is in the process of looking for something else. We are not, in math, we are not as happy with what we have tried with RTI as I think the reading teachers have been. The daytime ESS teachers work very, very hard. They make a huge contribution to our students' education. The only time you will not find them actively engaged with students is during the initial classroom instruction. The classroom teacher is responsible for introducing the new content. Students are targeted for assistance if they are included in our gap population. In fourth grade, we also include students who scored novice or apprentice on last year's state testing. This year, Ms. Sword services and helps me with 68% of my kids. Last year, my numbers were the same. We will continue to work hard. I believe we all would like additional training on our math series as well as on writing, extended, and constructed responses. Yes, open responses have a new name, and we are still very unclear how they're going to be scored. In the past, it's been my opinion that they are very subjective. After reviewing last year's scores, I randomly researched about 30 successful schools and found that 2/3 of these schools were not Title I. While I would love to visit these outstanding schools, I'm hoping to get to visit one or two that are closer to us in size and demographics. I would just like to go pick the brains. In closing, I want to say thanks again. I know that getting, that money is getting tight, and you have to make big decisions in the future. And as all the board members know me personally and know me for my lifetime, I was first a business major and a banker for many years. Every decision that I made for most of that time was black or white. Now, after 17 years of teaching, I know that it's just not true. In my world, in fourth grade, most of my decisions are gray. Please know that you're getting your money's worth. We all work very, very hard, and if you ever find yourself wondering, come over and spend the day with Tammy Sword, Kelsey Cecil, Natasha Baird, or Kelly Wolfter. Stay along with Delphia Lockhart, we'd be happy to put you to work.
My answer to this series is that we are. I'm Amy Johnson, and I teach fourth grade writing. I want to talk to you about our writing scores, and there are a few different components that go into that. You have language mechanics and the writing portion, on-demand writing, and also a program review that I believe is going to be in the accountability this school year or next?
This school.
This school year. We've had some meetings and discussed our scores, and we're not exactly sure how the program review component is going to impact scores this year. It is going to be a percentage, and it's mostly just some criteria that we look at and we see how we perform on that criteria. As far as our gap performance, the things that we talked about to improve our gap performance in on-demand, one of the biggest things that we have done this year that's in place is our writing plan. We were in need of a writing plan to discuss or to talk about, you know, how many pieces do we want students to write? How is their instruction? What kind of instructional strategies are we going to use and that kind of thing? So, we do have a writing plan in place, and I think that that will impact scores positively. We discussed the use of ESS teachers. ESS teachers are utilized in reading and math, and they should be. We are hoping that we can maybe emphasize more of a literacy connection with those ESS teachers. By targeting students in writing and in language arts, that can happen. There has been some talk of some after-school support. There's no formal plans, to my knowledge, at this point, but we have talked about some after-school support. We also talked about volunteer coaches and conference partners. We know from visiting top 10 school districts in the past that you do have some retired teachers in some districts that are willing to come back and do that kind of thing, so we're going to explore that. I've already talked about writing program review. As I say, I'm not real sure, or we're not real sure, how that's going to figure in this year to our score. We also had an idea from a teacher that used a student teacher from U-Pike, and there was some discussion of collaborating with the teacher education department at U-Pike and possibly assisting students going into these areas where there's a high concentration of gap kids and helping them. As we talked about, I'll move on to language mechanics. When we talked about language mechanics, again, utilizing the daytime ESS and showing that literacy connection, emphasis in, on mechanics in content areas and on content area assignments. We would love to find some kind of a computer program that could be used school-wide for language mechanics. And we are, this is a reading textbook adoption year, and so we're really excited to see that and to see those literacy connections with reading and with writing and with language, meshing the English-language arts together. In increasing on-demand writing scores, more emphasis in sentence and paragraph structure, and you're getting into your grammar component there. Talked about the reading adoption. Using a variety of writing tasks yearly, visiting successful schools. I think there might be a little pot of money somewhere from years ago that allowed us to go look at schools that have successful programs in place, and we would really like to do that. Training for content teachers in writing to understand writing-specific standards and how they apply in their content area. A school-wide behavior or recognition program, the honor roll was tossed around. And then, what we've done so far, we've analyzed the test data, we've created the school-wide writing plan, we've had some professional dialogue with high-performing elementary schools that have similar demographics to us and have got, we've gleaned some successful practices, we think. We've attended some PD with KD's Carol Mullins. We've also, we're also in the discussion stage of planning some scrimmage situations, and we have had some vertical dialogue to create consistent scoring practices. So, that's what I have to tell you about writing and our scores. Thank you for having us.
I am Kim McPeak, and I teach fifth grade science. We were approached, I guess, first began thinking about gap children in November when I received an email from Mr. Belcher. And at that time, we had received K-Prep scores, and we were, he was facilitating some information and wanting to know some things about what we thought about parental involvement in, for their children, programs that we were providing at school interventions, additional ways to identify these struggling students and those type of things. And so, I shot an email back to him, and I said, you know, I really think that I may have more questions than answers for you, simply because we are dealing with a different clientele than what we have occurred, has occurred in the past, you know, 22 years that I had been a teacher. First, let me say that our science scores are wonderful. Mrs. Fields did a fabulous job last year. Mrs. Cole, I'm sure, will be just as wonderful this year, and I can't complain there at all. Not to say that there aren't things that, of course, with writing and literacy connections that are new in the game, that we want to definitely look into incorporating those into your science classroom. And we are doing that, we will do that. Also, of course, we are very fortunate in that we have a well-stocked lab at an elementary school. Not many schools are blessed with that. I might add also that I have worked with two fabulous ladies in my career in the position of the science, I guess, resource person, and that is Jane Amos and then Susan Mayo, who are veteran teachers and probably sat and talked with me, especially Mrs. Mayo, and taught me more about myself and my teaching and how to use laboratory experiences with fifth graders than what I had time to do on my own. I'm sad to say that we don't have that service this year, but hopefully, and I do again realize money is an issue, but hopefully in the future, we might be able to work someone back into that position. It's just, you know, it was very helpful for all science, all students in science, K through 6 at Pikeville Elementary. And the lab, I might say, is being used and being utilized, and that is a good thing. But I do feel that that position really, really helps, help give more support to that program. So, as my committee came together, it was represented by Muriel Silvers and John DeSallier from Primary, along with Mrs. Cole, who is now teaching fourth grade science, myself and Mr. Justice, who's a sixth grade science teacher. And the question that we were sent was, you know, what can we do for these gap children? And in, you know, in or before they are assessed in fourth grade in science. We actually placed 70th out of 733 schools with gap children. Now, that's not horrible, but that's not first either. So, there is work to be done. We have new standards, of course, looking at us in the near future, and I believe that that will be an opportunity for science to get back into our instruction and start to see how we can improve and bring in, you know, those types of things for those particular children. But my committee felt very passionate, and if anyone who knows me knows that I'm very passionate about, just about anything I do, and especially when it comes to children. And we see as a major issue for the children that we teach today, as I'm sure you know, are some of the barriers that they experience every day with day-to-day life. So, we focused more on what types of things, you know, the scores are high, we have lab facilities, we have good instructors, we have the materials we need, but what's missing? And the things that we felt that we're missing for these children were a lack of motivation on their part, for one thing. There are just children who just seem to be not interested in learning. And with all the other things that, you know, teachers have to do and are trying to do, then we have to look at how we can motivate. And so, some suggestions were possibly motivational reward programs. I think Mrs. Johnson mentioned the honor roll or something like that. You know, goal-setting, teacher tutoring, peer tutoring, administrative pep talks, these are just some things that we already do, and I think may have to become more of the norm than what we've ever seen before. Of course, you know, in our society, that we are receiving many, many more Spanish-speaking And for someone who did not have Spanish but German in college, I am in no way equipped to be able to help that child the way that I should. So, we are very much in need with gap children that are Spanish-speaking to have some kind of a support system for them in place. Another thing is, of course, when you are thinking about them, you can't help but think about their home life. And so many times, many of us have said that we would take that child home with us if we could. And so, the barriers that are concerning us about home life and things that they are not getting possible role models or types of things that are wanting them to be successful in school. And so, we were thinking, what could we as a school system offer them? And some things came up like a Big Brother's Big Sisters top organization, partnering younger students with older students. We are doing that some now, and it is, I have a fifth grade student who goes down and reads with a primary student, and he's as excited to leave my classroom to go read to that little boy as that little boy probably is for him to be there. So, that, you know, some of that is being done. However, it's just not enough. We've got to look at other ways that we can continue. And it may have to be some after-school type issues. It may not be something that we can take care of during the day. I suggested to Mr. Belcher in my email when I sent that back, that we may need to sit down and talk to the community, churches, mountain comprehensive care, you know, any organization who deals with, you know, this type of situation in these types of homes, to try to figure out what types of things the school can do. Because I assure you, our school, as strong as we are and as hard as we will work, we cannot do this alone. We have, we have to have some type of a partnership. And we have, I might say, start, have started a backpack program that we are sending home every Friday to needy children, backpack. every Friday to needy children, backpack with food supplies for the weekend and for an extended period of time, if it's a three-day weekend, like we just had. And we're servicing 25 students at this time. This is, it started in January, is the first time that this has gone on. So we're just starting to try to look at ways that we can make a difference. They're out there, and we have to figure out how, how to do that. You can't teach a hungry child. You can't teach a child who did not sleep any the night before. There are just barriers that, that, that are out of our control. However, there are things that we can do, hopefully, to, to help with that. So in closing, I just want to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to sit down with you. I thank you for inviting us. I want to say to my fellow science teachers all the way through that I'm very, very proud of you and of what we have done for students in, in that area. I think it's been very important for, for students. And let me say just one other thing, and this, this is, this is concerning high school, and that's just because I'm a mother. God first, family second, my job third. And that is, I know that our district is very high-performing, and we are looking to send children to college. And career readiness gets thrown on the back of that sometimes. And just let me try to give a face to some of the students who need technical opportunities and are not college-bound. Please let me say that they are almost, it seems like, stereotyped if they are at Pikeville, and they are not going to apply to a college or be in college. And I don't know about the rest of you, if you've ever, if you've tried to hire a plumber lately for an electrician or paid them. They make pretty darn good money, and there's not many of them out there. My grandfather was a plumber and by trade, and let me just say that, that let's embrace those children and try to give them an opportunity, because we need those children in our communities also. Thank you so very much.
I think one thing, Ms. McPeak, I'd like you to share where our, our scores were, though. You ranked.
Oh, we were first.
Yeah.
We were tied for number one.
In science, yeah.
Well, I have to say, I feel a little unprepared compared to the likes of these guys who come here with no notes, who's this guy? So I'll just do the best I can. I'm Drew Cecil. I teach sixth grade social studies. It's my first year in that position. The last two years, I taught fifth grade there. We were asked two questions, and the first question was, what are we most pleased with in terms of our K-Prep scores, fifth grade social studies? And we, you know, my consensus felt really pleased. You know, there are, we were one of the four districts in the state of Kentucky that got a 100 in APD overall, you know? And of those, of those four, we had the highest proficiency rating. So 83 and a half percent of our students were proficient or higher in fifth grade social studies. So, you know, we're, we're pretty proud of that. But the other thing we were asked was, what can we do to increase gap scores? And gap scores were, I think our rating was a 57.1, above state average, but not quite as high as we'd like it to be. But, you know, the social studies and science faced the same problems. We had very high overall scores, but gap, gap is where we were looking, what we want to do. And the answers our committee came up with were very similar to what science came up with. When you're looking at, when you're looking at gap students, it's more about what can you do to help the whole child rather than pure instructional methods? And, you know, we, we thought a motivational reward program for students that exhibit lack of, lack of motivation, give them something to, give them some incentive to do better. And, you know, teachers can do that to an extent, but maybe if it was some sort of, you know, school-based thing, there'd be more to that. You know, Spanish-speaking population's certainly a growing demographic, I think, I think ESL, I think that's definitely going to have to be, I mean, we're, we're getting there, but I think that's going to have to be looked at a little more. You know, these students that, there are some students whose home life may not be the best, and a mentorship program, something like that would be beneficial to them as well. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of what I would want to say to improve gap performance would be very repetitive of what Ms. McPeak has already covered. So that's really all I have. I thank you guys for bringing us here today and for letting us share what we have.
Before Ms. Wells talks, I want to say something. I think it's interesting, when we talked about some of those things, that when we looked at scores, at our scores, you know, very high scores, when we compared those with the top 10 districts across the state in each subject area, it's interesting that our, our, you know, our highest scores were, were equal with theirs, but also our gap scores were equal. So the problems we're facing are not just common to us, it's, it's common everywhere. So we're kind of looking for ways to, and one thing they've mentioned, you know, almost to a T, is we are looking at advisor-adviser type programs, mentoring programs throughout our school, and I think that's one of the keys. Ms. Wells, I apologize.
That's okay. I said, "I don't need this mic." I tell a coach junior high basketball, girls' basketball in this school district, and if anybody coaches girls, you don't need a mic for anything, because they never be quiet. They're never quiet. But I was, I don't want to come in front of you pretending to know everything there is about reading and our reading scores. I mean, we've dissected them and we've looked at them, but I was the one asked to come and speak to you all, being the representative of the reading group that met. And as teachers, it's sometimes hard for us to, to look at things and say, "Oh, we did this good," because we want to look and see how we can improve. So the hardest question for us was, what are we pleased with? And I know we are always pleased with things, but as, as teachers, we're always looking for ways to improve. And so when we sat down, there were, obviously, as in everything, you know, there are some things we were pleased with. Our overall reading score, we had 69.5% of our students reading at or above proficiency. And so we felt like that was a good starting score. Obviously, we're always looking to improve, and we want to improve that this year, but that is a good point. Also, our sixth grade scores, our sixth grade scores were sixth in the state. And, and when you look at it, that doesn't occur in sixth grade. That occurs in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. And so what an accomplishment for our school. Let, not only, you know, Tatanah Hall, who's our sixth grade reading teacher, but that is a culmination of all those strategies and standards and, and small groups and targeted students along their whole spectrum of elementary school there. And so we were so proud of that. You know, our gap group was 60th out of 733. And again, I, I look at that and I, and I pulled out that that is the students we targeted last year with our ESS students and, and our ESS, daytime ESS teachers. And, and upstairs, they would make fun of the things we would say, because we would always be like, "Oh, take out this week, you know, we got to focus on these kids, we got to," you know, and they said, "They're going to buy me," and all our fifth grade t-shirts for the things that we kept saying about targeting certain students to make sure we were showing growth and, and targeting those gap students. Because as everyone has said here, many of those students come with many barriers before they get to us. And so when you look at a child, you don't just see what they're able to do in reading, but you see them as a child. And so I think our ESS, I know our ESS is making a difference. And that is something that we were very pleased with in reading, is knowing that we're targeting those students and that they are showing growth and that they are making improvements. No, no doubt about it. And we looked at, our question was, what can be done to increase overall academic performance? And we came up with some things, and you know, at, at our school, I can already see some of these things occurring. And when we have discussions about the new standards and how they are affecting not only reading, writing, and math, but science and social studies, and how yesterday we had a professional development for all teachers about including literacy within the classroom, and every teacher in that PD embraced the fact that literacy is going to become not only part of the reading, writing classroom, but of all the classrooms. And not one teacher left there saying, "I'm not sure I want to do this." Everyone said, "You know what? This is something that we're all going to do to make us all better." And so that was very refreshing. And so that was one of the things we thought we could improve on, and like I said, we're already starting to do some of those things. And just more deliberate and focused reading strategies in those content areas. And I, being a reading teacher, I jump on this thing, I do sometimes, but I think that when you include reading and writing within a content area, it doesn't add one more thing to your plate. I think it enhances what you're already doing. And I think you're targeting the entire child, and you're teaching them, they have to read the science book, and they have to read the social studies book, but you are allowing them to develop as a reader and a writer and a thinker along with those content areas. And those shifts are starting to occur already, and so I have no doubt that those things will continue. You know, I'm going to talk about what Ms. Johnson talked about. At Pikeville Elementary, we're looking at adopting a new reading series with a close alignment of reading and writing in our standards. I just don't see how we could come up with a new series that doesn't align that reading and writing. And so one thing we were wanting and hoping we would make sure to do is to find a program that does allow for the entire literacy program to be taught and make those connections, and that we, we dissect and really look at that series to address not only the Common Core standards, but the rigor that, that is expected by the Common Core. Not only that those are included, but, but that we are taking students to a new level. And we are, you know, right now, we are focusing on Common Core, but there's a lot of, of searching and pulling of text, and, and so hopefully having that comprehensive program that everyone's using, that can align from kindergarten through sixth grade, we'll see a major impact in that. And, you know, some of the other ways we were hoping that we could improve overall reading score, I know we go to the teacher, teacher leader meetings with Carol Mullins, and we hear some of those things like close reading and text-dependent questions. And so just giving some, some additional training for the reading teachers and the, and really, you know, all the teachers would benefit from a lot, getting students to go back to that text more than once. And that's kind of what the close reading and text-dependent questions are asking them to do. And sometimes they look at you like your head's spinning when you say, "Reread it." But, you know, we got to get them to the point where they're going back to the text and thinking of those higher-level thinking skills. And, and personally, I personally need more training in that, because I typically, as a teacher, when you think of text-dependent, you think of recall questions, and there are places for recall questions. But for me to, to actually sit down and dissect a text and think of higher-level thinking questions, I need some practice more to get them where they need to be. And so that was something we talked about, is looking closely at some of those things. And I know Mr. Belcher and I and Ms. Mullins talked yesterday about doing some more focused professional development in, in what our areas would be, and that, that would be something that, you know, reading teachers could, could use and utilize immediately in the classroom, no matter the text that you're using. And I think the only other thing we talked about was extended responses. I know that they're on our K-Prep, and I know we're focused on them. I know, I see it throughout all the classrooms. We have, I, I feel that maybe some more training for us on how to score those. We have a sample online, and it's, and it, and it shows you the different levels that students would score on it, but it's with one question. And so sometimes it is a little subjective, and when I look at the Extended Response Scoring Guide, you, you try your best to be consistent with that, but maybe some specific training on taking that scoring guide and how that applies to my fifth graders and how that applies to fourth graders, and, and taking their responses that they're giving us and building them up towards where we want them to go with what we have. I would like to say that I have worked in different school systems and in different states even, and the thing that I noticed about our school is that we have pride throughout the entire school. And we don't just say it in the mornings, because it does get the kids thinking along those lines. The kids say it, they feel it, the teachers, I mean, it, when you walk up and down those hallways, it's a different, different atmosphere. And I think it all starts with teachers caring about the child, and then, and then thinking about where we can take the child. But it all starts with the child. That's all I have for you.
Anyone else in elementary?
Anyone else from the elementary school?
Anyone else want to? I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Wow, very impressive. Got something to live up to, guys. Told the teachers we met yesterday, kind of, to kind of brainstorm what we're going to do today at home, just to be at home. One thing I did tell them, the TV wouldn't be here, so I'm sorry, I apologize for that. Make up for that, Mr. Jones did say he was buying your dinner. Some things to remember about where we're at as a high school. We're fourth in the state when it comes to our district ACT scores. It's an outstanding accomplishment. One of the nine highest-performing schools in the state of Kentucky, and we're one of 17, what, parents won awards districts. So we have speaks a lot and volumes for what these folks do on a daily basis. The hours they put in are amazing. There's not a time we go by our school that we don't see at least one of these teachers or multiples of teachers in the building planning and getting ready. Part of that is our, we've got great students. Our elementary school sends us students that are on grade level, if not way beyond grade level, and I'm sure our teachers can attest to that, they, they do challenge us. You have to bring your, your A-game every day, because if not, then they'll put you into place. So it's good, it's good to have that. I just want to thank each of these teachers for coming out tonight and, and sharing what we're doing, because there are a lot of great things going on, and we appreciate you, and maybe I don't say it a lot, but at least we can say it now on TV, but we do appreciate you. And before Ms. Scott gets started here, I do want her to tell us about our greenhouse.
I'm Kelly Stone, biology teacher, and I'm also the Pride Club sponsor. And one of the Pride Club goals this year was to grow food for the cafeteria, and it came about because, you know, the change in the dietary standards and all of that, and the kids said, "Well, gosh, it'd be nice if we had something fresh." And so we work so hard, and we have written grant after grant, and begged for money here and did all kinds of things, and so things are finally starting to fall into place. And our greenhouse was delivered last week, and it started being built yesterday, and so hopefully by tomorrow, it will be finished and in place, and then we can work on our raised bed gardens and have everything ready to go, at least in the next week to week and a half. So we're just going to grow salad vegetables, and so we're just going to focus on lettuce and tomatoes and cucumbers and peppers. That was what the students wanted to do, and so, you know, we're kind of excited about that.
Where's it located?
It's, it's around the back of the school, and it's that little area between, you know, the fence.
Parking place, which is not a good.
It's between the building and the, who was the highway department?
Highway.
So we're in that little, yeah. And we've had the, the fire department came out and said that, they gave me a certain spot, so it would be still safe if anything ever happened. So, yeah, it's, yeah, it took a long time to try to find some place to put it.
Can you please send the elementary schools some potatoes that we can try? Because we're not getting them very much.
Changeless diet, I take it. And I would like to say that we have a wonderful science department, grade seven. I would like to say that we have a wonderful science department, grade seven through 12 at Pikeville High School. And I'm just very blessed to be part of such a wonderful program with wonderful teachers and wonderful friends, students. I can't say enough about it. We are very excited to start with our new upcoming science standards. We don't have new ones yet like everyone else does, so we're waiting. And so we're excited and we're excited to see how that will affect our classroom and also our students. And I'm here just representing the science department, ninth through 12, and that includes Cindy Stewart, our department chair, Susan Kennon, who was not able to be here, and then myself. And I guess I'll start off talking about test scores. And we're very proud of our test scores and where we have come. And we're continuing to improve and I think what we're doing is the right thing. So we're going to continue to do that and add more to it. With our planned scores, what we like to do is when the kids take it and then we come back and then we analyze it in class. And the students are allowed to take those questions again a second time. And if they've missed them a second time, then we do teacher reflection and student reflection and evaluation and talk about each of the questions and talk about reading. And most of the time, it comes down to time management because science usually is at the end and then there's, you know, they're tired and they try to get through it. And so we've really been working on time management and how to read the content to answer the questions. And so we've been working a lot on that. As far as ACT, we continue to have the scientific readings in our classroom. We're incorporating that more. And we're also involving more of the literacy standards in our classroom because it's, you know, what we're supposed to be doing and I really sort of enjoy it. And so we, you know, out of all those things, and I really think all of those will continue to improve with our test scores. One thing our department wanted to do was to look at how we can allow our students to be more successful. Because sometimes, you know, we think, "Well, that's a great plan," but then when it goes into action, it might not be the best thing for all students. And so we tried to come up with a way that would allow every student to be successful in science, regardless of what level they wanted to or how involved they like to be with science. Because every one of us knows someone, "I don't like science." And so we tried to, we're trying to get every one of those children. So next year with our incoming freshmen, we've made some changes. And we have three different tracks that students can go and they're not set in stone. And if they go one way and do not like that one or do not feel comfortable, then they can journey to another one. Or if they're in another one and they feel like they're not being challenged enough, then they can go to another one. So we're trying to offer lots of opportunities. And so every freshman, all of the freshmen, every freshman next year will all take earth and space science at the same time. So every student freshman year will take earth and space. Then from there, depends on where they'd like to go. If they're more of a general track, then they can go ahead into introduction to chemistry and physics or ICP class. And then from there, they can take biology as a junior. Then if they're more of a college prep, more of a, you know, education or business, those sorts of things, then they will take earth and space as a freshman. They can also double up with ICP and then take biology as a sophomore. Or if they didn't take ICP as a freshman, they can take that as a sophomore. And then as a junior, they can take chemistry or they can take AP environmental science or AP biology and other electives that we're hoping to be able to add into that. Then if they're more, and then if they're senior year, then they can also continue to take chemistry two, physics, you know, APs or AP biology as well. So there's lots of opportunities to increase. For the student who is looking for a medical field, that style, they'll be college prep and they can work a little more quickly. And there's a lot of opportunities to take AP classes. And so we want to be able to offer that to every student, that opportunity for them to increase their science knowledge. And we have added some prerequisites to help the student be more successful. The prerequisites not prohibit students from taking classes, but to help them be more successful so that they are setting themselves up for success. And so like ICP, all of our prerequisites are an A, B, or C in the class. So to take ICP, you have to have Algebra I. Chemistry I, you must have ICP and Algebra II. To take Chemistry II, you must have Algebra I. To take Physics, the prerequisite is pre-cow. For Anatomy and Physiology and Medical Science, you need to have Biology and Chemistry is a co-requisite. Biology is a pre or a co, and Chemistry is a co. And then we're hoping after one to two years of transition, getting all the new things in place, we're hoping to be able to offer semester-long electives. And so that would spark interest to other students. You know, one could be botany, one could be science fiction. And there's so many things out there that we could do semester forensic science that would allow for the student who is interested in technical things and an opportunity to experience something else. So we, you know, we're continuing to improve and we see lots of changes and we're very excited about what we're doing and what we will be doing in our science department. Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Crater and I guess probably I'm always the duck out of the water because I'm representing the career readiness, which you've not heard too much about. And I started with the district four years ago and will be graduating, my first group of freshmen. And I'll get to you, I just think about it. Because one of those will be mine, but I feel like many of them are mine. And the career readiness, of course, has become more important for the district with the changes. We get a point for college ready, which is your ACT or your compass. But career ready, you get another point if they do the correct career ready academic, which is the ASVAB that we take. Or, and the career ready technical, which is the COSA, which we also take. For those students that come through a career major. And I am a department of one and I have Mr. Blackburn. And at this, when I came to Pikeville High School, they offered a different career major and it wasn't, in my opinion, working for our students. I think your clientele, you need to look at your clientele. And so I asked to change some of the things that was in the department. And I think it's been for the better, I hope it's been for the better. We do offer Mr. Blackburn, we will offer web development, webpage development. And that's the career major that we take the COSA test in. I also offer the teaching class, which although there's no COSA test for, I will say, I think it's been very successful and I do appreciate everyone's support. That's a big thing with our elementary. I have 25 students in that class this year. And someone was talking about mentoring, those big kids feel as good as the little kids. Always when I go, always when I go over to the elementary, I feel like a rock star. Especially Mrs. Crater. So I'm growing my batch, you know, from kindergarten or preschool, actually. But I think the more exposure we get, I think, first of all, it's a good connection between our, you know, the elementary and the high school students. They both feel good about themselves. And I think it's a positive experience. We talked about positive role models. And last year, and I will mention, Randy Maynard was one that I kept encouraging because he was so good with those students. And he said, "Well, Mrs. Crater, I'm going into the medical field." But, you know, that doesn't work out.
Can I say something? I spoke to his dad two days ago. I think he's going into education now.
Math education, okay. In fact, he brought me a card at the beginning of the year before he went off to college and he said, "If the medical thing doesn't work out," he said, "I want to go into education." And it's all because I took this class and I really enjoyed it. So, you know, I know he'll be very successful. But I have, I could probably name nine or 10 students that are in education right now since I started four years ago, which is, you know, a good thing. Then we decided to do what everybody else knows as the new show, but it actually is a major, multimedia major. And I think that's been very successful, although there's not been a COSA test for that. Just because there's no test there doesn't mean that we should not offer those things, those opportunities. I think I have three students for sure that are going to be going into that field. We have two that received scholarships from New Pike. And New Pike started this major this year because based on the work that my students have done, not me, that my students have done. So that's an awesome thing for those students that I'm referring to, many of you know. And I think it has helped them blossom over the years. All students are good at something. What we think is successful may not be in their eyes, you know, the same things. So college and career readiness, because ultimately we are preparing them for a career, I would hope. So now this year, we're looking, Mr. Blackburn and I, I talked to him today, we have one major concern. When I first walked through the doors at Pikeville High School and I had one freshman class computer application, and I thought I had died and gone to heaven. Because usually I have the other end, that's a little bit harder to motivate, although I love them. But that group of freshmen had pretty much followed me through their four years. And many of them will be receiving college career majors, career majors this year. However, when we look at our rosters, because of some changes at our school, we rarely see a freshman. And I looked at our rosters between Mr. Blackburn and I because I am, we are the only department that's not required at all. And so the students have to make a choice to take us. We moved computer applications to the eighth grade and that's great. Unfortunately, we don't get much access to those students. And I think we will see the repercussions starting next year because we have about 20 underclassmen from the two of us, other than the junior high class that I'm always looking for recruiting material that I'm teaching this year. I'm not including those numbers. So we're real concerned about the career readiness as far as those, you know, students having that opportunity to major in any, you know, any type of career. But I think we have been, when I walked in, again, we had 18 members at B.O.A., which is required. And I had to say, but I have to say, I had to cut 13 students from competing this year at regionals because they limit it to 60 kids that can compete. And I had to go through and say, "I'll have to cut this many." Which is a good, I mean, it's a good thing, but it's a bad thing that, you know, we have limitations. Because out of those 60 last year, we took 51 to state competition, that qualified for state competition. So these students, I think, you know, they are college ready and I do think they are career ready. And that's awesome. Now they may change paths. I've got one in here today that she says, "Mrs. Crater, I may change, you know, career paths." And she said, "Would you be mad?" And I'm like, "No." But we did. See, Mrs. Crater's still trying to figure out what she wants to be when she grows up. But with that being said, I do appreciate the opportunity. We will always try to grow our department. So when we sit down and talk to Mr. Blackburn and I, we look at what works for us, what doesn't work for us, we scrap it and we, you know, start over. This year, I think we're going to add business management as a major because in talking to some of the students, first of all, I think the Governor's Scholar for Entrepreneurship that came out this year really has some of our students very excited. We had two that actually went through the application process and they're really, that's a fingers crossed that they make it. Anytime those kind of opportunities open up in our area, students start looking at us more seriously, I think. So that's a great opportunity. Plus, many of us will ultimately become business owners. Even if we're a doctor, I always, when I taught accounting, my students, like, they got out second semester because it's, you know, it's pretty tough, you know? And if they're not interested, it's like, "Oh." I think first semester did us in. But you should always know what's going on in your business and your finances. Even if you're majoring in medical and you become a doctor, you probably want to know where your road is going. So we offer career opportunities for these students and I'm very, very thankful to have those students. I just hope that we can continue to, I always, in my former school, they always made a joke. I was kind of the recruiter. I would sit at the guidance counselor's door and I would be like, "You're going to change your schedule. Welcome, welcome." So I do want to provide all the opportunities that we can, whether it involves a test or not. I think we need to prepare them for life.
I'm Susan Huffman and I teach arts and humanities. In my department, Tina Leisure teaches Spanish, Paula Smith, visual arts, Scott Bressalia, band. Andrew Petrie is teaching fine arts at the freshman level. And Barbara Kelly, of course, comes over and does our chorus. Before I begin, I want to read a, I don't know if it's a quote or whatever, from the February Arts and Humanities newsletter that's published by the Department of Education. "Research shows that learning in the arts develops student engagement, meaningful involvement, and persistence in one's own learning. Skills essential for success in school, work, and life. Multiple studies spanning the education system from pre-kindergarten through high school suggest that students involved in arts study are more engaged in school and more motivated to learn than comparison groups." Our program has been successful. I've been teaching fine arts for seven years and prior to that, I was teaching English. Our scores were always at the top. Of course, at one point, we were tested and now we aren't, we're performance-based. I know that Paula Smith in visual arts is doing a phenomenal job. We have so many students that have graduated and have gone on and done just some unbelievable things. Scott Bressalia is just so passionate about working with the band and turning all of that around. I know that Mrs. Kelly, the choral students are just really excited to have her. So we're, our group, you know, we really work hard and we want to provide students with, you know, opportunities for them. A few areas that we feel we need to look at in junior high right now because arts and humanities is no longer offered, that's what Ms. Crater used to teach, she is doing a six, seven weather enrichment course. There is nothing other than, I know we have drama seven through 12. Of course, I'm hearing that mixing the junior high with the high school, I'm not really sure how that's working. We are looking at that. Mrs. Smith is going to be teaching art in eighth grade next year, so we feel that's a plus. I know dance is an area of concern. Of course, I teach the study and appreciation of art, drama, dance, music. I always bring in a dance instructor to go along with what I do. But I remember when I was in elementary school, we had dance in PE. So yesterday when we were meeting, we talked to Mr. McNamee about the possibility of, with the freshmen incorporating dance into that, and he was very receptive.
It was square dancing.
Yeah, we did that. I remember learning the Virginia Reel and all that stuff. Another thing that we're looking at, according to the State Department, students are only required to have one credit in visual arts. Now, after we've looked at this and I've talked to Mr. and Mrs. Belcher, it's my, it's our understanding that when kids are in elementary school, that is when they should be exposed to all the arts, art, drama, dance, music. And by the time you get to high school, you should think about specializing if you want to go on that career path of art or drama or music. And so how we've been doing it is every junior has had to take fine arts. So what we are going to propose is that, and I guess we would start next year... So what we are going to propose is that, and I guess we would start next year, students who have decided they want to go on a path with art or music or whatever, if they take one or two classes in Visual Arts or band, then they will be exempt from my class. We will offer that class for those students who don't want to go onto that path. I called several of the perform, high performing schools just to see what they did. Um, one of them, they just take one class. One art class would suffice for, instead of taking my class. Some schools, it's two, you would take two art classes or band two years or four. Some, it's three, so that's something that we are going to be ta- talking about. We feel that the arts is so, so important. And, um, something else I wanted to bring up, I think Mr. Green, I think Donovan Blackburn might have called you way back, because I know he told Mr. Rowe, and then Mr. Rowe talked to me. I got a group of students, we've been meeting with the city commission, um, several times. They have hired a lady, they want, they are in the process of doing a comprehensive city plan. What can we do, they wanted to target high school kids, what can we do to keep you here? Or what can we do, the city to do, to bring you back when you go away to college? And it's all involving around the arts. All these articles, editorials, Pike County's Got Talent. Two of the students mentioned in this editorial are our students. And I think of Madison Tackett. I look at all of the drama performances, the lead roles she's had. So many of our students are the ones, you know, Downtown, The Bears, two of those stu- two of our students created those. The city, the big push they're looking at is the arts. They see the importance, Main Street Live, bringing the Jimmy Wally Theater, you know, another theater here, um, what else, the Artisan Center. You know, Hatfield McCoy, um, play, everything we're seeing. So the city, when they're asking, what can we do, a lot of it is revolving around the arts. And I just see so many kids that this is just, they're so passionate about it. Now, I don't think Madison's going, I think she wants to teach. But she's not going on to theater, but look what it has done for her. I think of Caitlin Good and Jessica Casebo, Charles Mims, Peyton Ma- I mean, the list can go on and on and on. Students I know that know they're not making this their career, a lot of them, but how it's enhanced their life. So we've been excited that Pikeville High School, the board and the administration has seen how important it is to our school. Because in the past, our plays, these students come in, principals come in, teachers come in mesmerized at our auditorium. There isn't another one like it around here. And the plays that we put on, I mean, it's just, it just really warms your heart. Um, so I appreciate URO's commitment to the arts, and we just want to make sure it continues. And I guess that's it. Oh, sorry.
I'm Jackie Prady, and I teach eighth grade science. But somehow I got stuck with talking about on-demand writing, reading, social studies, and science. And the main reason is because we do the Explorer and the K-Prep in the eighth grade. So I'll start with on-demand writing first. But let, before I talk about any of them, I would like to say that one thing that we have piloted this year is we made referrals for all seventh grade students that scored below benchmarks in reading, English, math, and science. So some of those students have been coming for E S S and doing a program with Mr. Little, and it's called Wind Software. And so we're going to track these kids that have been coming and see them if next year their scores come up on the K-Prep score. So I won't talk about that anymore as I go through each of these subjects. So I'll start with on-demand writing first. Each eighth grade teacher is practicing on-demand writing in our enrichment class, except for our math teacher. Mrs. Caston, at the beginning of the year, she is our new Language Arts teacher. She made each of us a writing packet so that whenever a student is doing an on-demand writing in my class, they have the same models, they have the same pre-writes, they have the same tools in my class, in her class, in Mr., uh, Collins's class, and so on. And then each of the content teachers in Science and Social Studies are doing an argumentative writing. So we are doing this as a collaborative process. They write it in our class for their rough draft. Then they take that to the computer application class and put it on the computer. And then they take that to the Language Arts class. So the Language Arts teacher, then, she helps them to score it, proofread it, and revise it. Then they take it back to the computer lab and do all of their final product, and then they bring it back to the core content teacher for the grades. So we are in the process of completing our first pieces with that right now. Our Language Arts teacher did go this summer for the L T F strategies, so she's using those daily. And she's practicing writing, specific writing instruction with we. With our math program, our scores moved from sixty-fourth position in the state on the Explorer to tenth position this year, so we're very proud of that. Like I said before, we have referred many students in the seventh grade that did not meet the benchmark for E S S, so we will track those students and see if this program is worth keeping. If it is, then we might be able to extend that next year for those students that scored below on the benchmarks on the Explorer in the eighth grade. Then they could then bring that up the year before they take the plan test and in the tenth grade. So we're still experimenting with that. We do have a math lab, though, for students that scored below the, I think it was the twentieth percentile on the K-Prep and the Explorer. And we have nine students in the seventh grade that are taking that class, and then eight eighth graders. And that's in addition to their normal eighth grade or seventh grade math class. Mr. Moens also had to class the seventh and eighth grade special ed students for math that will hopefully help to close that gap, because that is one of our gaps with our special needs children. So instead of them doing an enrichment class, they go to math class with him. And then the math teacher completed an item analysis of the two thousand and twelve Explorer test on January the twenty-second, and she is presently using the questions from the Explorer test then as bellwork. And then she has also uploaded the Explorer test on PDF on her teacher webpage so that students can access that at their convenience. And then every Friday, she tests the kids over the skills that were reviewed that week through the bellwork. And she wanted to make a point that I said, that with the new math cor- uh, standards, rigor has definitely increased in their math department. Now, for reading, we have moved our Explorer positions from sixty-seventh position in the state to ninth in reading, and in English, it moved from forty-fourth to seventh this year. We also have a reading lab where we have two seventh graders and seven eighth graders. And placement was determined based on the K-Prep and Explorer. And they require that any student that scores below the tenth percentile to attend, and then they make a recommendation that if they score below the twentieth pers- percentile, that it's recommended but not demanded. The only problem that our teachers have with that, though, is that we do have some students that qualify for math lab and reading lab, but they can only attend one of the two instead of both. Uh, the teacher in reading completed the Explorer analysis on January the twenty-second and the twenty-third. And what she is having her students to do is to retake the Explorer test this second semester, and then they are going to compare to determine what the student weaknesses are, and then address those in bellwork. Uh, also, um, in our Science and Social Studies, we all are including a reading passage on all of our chapter and unit tests. The teacher test and activities are passage-based in order to provide daily practice. Our special needs students attend Mr. Moens's class for additional reading instruction using the reading one eighty, and that also is during enrichment time. And one of the suggestions that our reading teacher made was next year, if we could do some type of ability grouping based on reading for our enrichment groups, we thought that we would be able to meet the individual needs of our students better that way. In Social Studies, the teacher is using document-based questions on all tests. The teacher is working through P O Cs with other Social Studies teachers. And prior to K-Prep, we are going to have some review sessions because we are noticing that in the eighth grade, we have American history. In the seventh grade, we have world history. And so before they take the K-Prep, we need to have some review sessions over the world history that they had in the previous year. And we also have completed an on, on-demand writing activity in history this year in order to improve not only on-demand writing skills, but to give the students additional practice in writing, because on their K-Prep scores, the students seem to have a weakness in writing. In Science, we moved from thirty-eighth position in the state to ninth on the Explorer test. Students practiced doing three Explorer tests during bellwork before we took that test this year. We completed an item analysis on January the seventh and eighth with the eighth grade. And I luckily got to do Ms., uh, uh, McNulty's. Because she was off for surgery, but it gave me a good insight because I traded classes with her and did the item analysis with the seventh graders. So now I know before they come to eighth grade what their weaknesses are for next year. So that was a good learning experience for me, and I would like to continue to do that next year. And then the last nine weeks of this year, I plan on practicing as bellwork plan questions so that when the students go to the ninth grade next year and take the plan test, they will be better prepared for that. In fact, that covers everything, except for, since I'm the E S S coordinator, we've been talking a little bit about our Spanish population, and we haven't had a whole lot of money to address this. But what, one thing we have done is provided Spanish tutoring one day a week that we bus the elementary Spanish-speaking children over to our school. And then we have two or three of our own that attend one day a week. So hopefully next year, we'll be able to do a little bit more with that.
My name's Jennifer McNulty, and I teach, um, seventh grade science. Um, seventh and eighth grades share a lot of common resources. So a lot of the themes that, um, Ms. Prady talked about, um, also kind of pertains to us as well, and I'll, I'll not go back into that. Um, one of the things I think we probably need to start with, which will give us an idea of, of why we've gone in the direction that we have in the seventh grade, um, is our test scores, of course. Um, in Science, we were first in the state, reading tenth, and math forty-eighth. So what we looked at is, okay, where is our weakness, and what can we do to address this weakness? Um, up until this past year, we actually had, uh, two Language Arts teachers who, um, kind of, you know, subdivided that content and attacked that content. But looking at the scores, you know, we had to ask ourselves realistically, where would our services best be for the students? So we decided to, um, break the new standards, the new math standards that come out. The rigor was so mu- is so much more difficult. Um, and because of the trickle-down effect of these standards, um, most math teachers are playing catch-up. So, um, what we decided to do was have two math teachers instead of two Language Arts teachers. We, um, have divided the content that they're teaching. Um, Ms., um, McNamee is teaching pre-algebra. Um, and then Ms., Ms. Prater is teaching geometry, probability, statistics, and measurement. Um, just divided so that it makes more sense and there's a cohesiveness that the students can identify in those content areas. So that's one thing that we've done to address that situation. Now, let me say, forty-eighth is not bad. Um, there's probably lots of schools who would like to have this problem. So, but once again, um, I know that all of us, when we look at it, I know that when we look at these individual scores, it's, it's like, oh, that's great, that's last year. Okay, what are we gonna do for this year? And so that's kind of how we attack things. Um, we also have created, um, a math lab. So those students who, as Ms. Prady said, fall below that, the tenth percentile on, um, benchmarks and K-Prep testing and so forth, those students go into that math lab. Um, and we're doing the same thing for the reading lab. Um, same situation, same setup. Problem is, most of the students who score below the percentile in math are doing the same thing for reading. And we're gonna have to do some inventive scheduling for next year, we know that, so that we're not picking and choosing at this moment, well, do we service the child in reading, or do we service the child in math? Because we can't do both at one time. So that's one area that we know that we're gonna have to address, and we're going to do that. Um, I call them growing pains. Um, and of course, that addresses, um, the issue with students who are falling in those gap areas. Um, Mr. Moens is also servicing the seventh grade students with a reading program called one eighty. Um, that program seems to be very successful with, um, students. Um, so we are really attacking those core content areas of, of basic foundations in math and reading. We have, um, after-school tutoring, E S S services in math. Um, and let me say, even though, um, we don't have additional E S S services in the seventh grade, um, we are after-school tu- most of the tu- we're there till four-thirty, five-nine, twelve. So they're always there, and our doors are open, and we don't have to have an E S S sign to be servicing those students, and they know that. Um, seventh grade, uh, we're the first face that represents the high school because even though technically we're junior high, we are a part of the high school. So we embrace them, and we kind of walk them through things and make them feel comfortable, but more importantly, make their parents feel comfortable. Uh, because it's sometimes a little scarier for the parents than it is, um, for the students. Um, one other thing that we're doing is, um, looking at this Explorer test. Um, each of us have picked apart the Explorer. We have used, um, previous year's Explorer test, um, and analyzed that. The students take the practice test, we analyze that, we go over that. Um, very similar to what we all did last year. And the eighth grade students take the Explorer in September. So if, if they don't do well, we kind of take the blame for that. The seventh grade teachers take the blame for that because there's not a lot that the eighth grade teachers are gonna be able to get in within a month's time, and we know that. So we were pleased with those scores, we were pleased with the K-Prep scores. Um, we are our own worst critics, um, we'll find the problem before anybody else will. And, um, we know that there are some issues, um, but there are technical issues that we think that we can fix. It's, um, I think, just thinking creatively, we can do that. Um, other than that, that's it, unless you have any questions.
And I'm Ashley Adams, I'm representing the math department, um, for the high school. And I'll talk a little bit about the seventh and eighth grade because we all work together, but they touched a lot on that. Um, the tests that we have in the high school math are, um, the Algebra II has an end-of-course assessment. The tenth graders are assessed on the plan, and our juniors are assessed on A C T. So we're assessed different, um, areas. Um, our scores are, are good, but we do have, um, some room for improvement on those. So for the Algebra II end-of-course, we feel like we've got some really good things in place to help us with doing better. Um, this year, we have a lot more students who are taking our honors course, um, for Algebra I and Algebra II, so we feel like that's gonna help us improve. Um, in all of the classes, we are all utilizing more timed testing, and so we feel like that's gonna help with all of those because Algebra II, um, end-of-course, plan, and A C T are all timed tests. Um, we are using benchmark testing in the Algebra II class, and we're trying to use that to individualize instruction more and to see where our, um, individual student weaknesses are. Um, last year, we didn't have any, um, students on the benchmark or the end-of-course that were performing at distinguished level, and this year, on our benchmark test, we already showed that we have a large group. And I feel like that's where we're not having to play catch-up as much with, um, the new standard. So that's helping. Um, we're also doing a breakdown of last year's end-of-course assessment because that was our first go with that, and we had never seen it before. So we're doing that to align our classroom assessments and questioning techniques so that it aligns with the end-of-course exam. Um, some things we already have in place that we feel like are- Some things we already have in place that we feel like are helping us are, is our retake policy that we have in our math department. When we do that seven through twelve, students are allowed to retake three exams and a nine weeks, except for our comprehensive exam. And, you know, some people say, well, you don't get to retake a test in college. But we feel like if, if the students know what they're supposed to know, no matter how many times it took them to get it, if we send them to college prepared and they know the material, we feel like they'll be better prepared when they get there. And then we also have the comprehensive exams that we don't allow them to retake, but we feel like that's helping us improve on ACT, retaining the knowledge and with the end-of-course. So by the time they take the fourth nine-weeks exam, it's of the entire year. So it essentially is an end-of-course exam in all of our math classes that we have. And we feel like that has had a very positive impact in our classes. Ms. Melon's is our Algebra II teacher. And this year, we were able to put our money together and buy new calculators. The TI has come out with new technology and new calculators to help address some of these standards and enhance the learning. The only problem is, you know, we only have a class set, and we have that all of her students are learning how to use this calculator. But when they take the exam, thirty of them will get it, and the rest will not. So with calculators, would be great. That would help a lot. So we also didn't have a very good score. From PLAN to ACT, we didn't score very high on our growth. We were high on the PLAN, and we were high on ACT, but we haven't expected growth. And so the higher you score, the harder it is to grow, and we talked about that. So we've really gotta look at fine-tuning some things that we've done. In all of our classes, we're using ACT items as our bell ringers to help with that. Ms. Lucas does a lot of, she has a lot of juniors, and she does a lot of ACT days, and that helps. And we're also doing our, this week actually, our PLAN and ACT analysis together. All of us are working together. So some of us are either taking sophomores or either taking juniors during the day and splitting our classes up and analyzing how they did on the PLAN and the ACT, the practice ACT that they took in the fall, and are going over that. And then they'll take a similar quiz to see how well they did with that and help with the ACT that's coming out. Another thing that we are planning on is, right now, we have some students who are taking pre-algebra their freshman year. And we did this because we felt like we had a group of students who needed a better foundation for the Algebra II end-of-course exam. The problem is, those students, if they don't ever double up, and those are your students who probably are not gonna double up in math, will take geometry their senior year. So they will take, we have a group of students who will take the ACT this year who have not had geometry. And so we realized that that is a major issue. And so what we feel like is our students still need that better foundation in algebra. So what we would like to do is to change, instead of having a pre-algebra course, their freshman year, all freshmen would take Algebra I, who might not have taken it in the eighth grade. But those students who would have needed the pre-algebra, and we do that based on their scores in eighth grade, will take an extra algebra class that we will call Algebra Foundations. And it will be an extra time to get a better foundation of the algebra before they go on to Algebra II and then geometry their junior year. So we feel like, we know that that's a problem, but we wanna take care of it now. And then the se- the second teacher in seventh grade, we feel like, is really gonna help us with the standards that changed and then having that better foundation and not having to play catch-up as much as because all of the standards kind of went down. Like, pre-cow went to Algebra II, Algebra II standards went down to Algebra I. And so we've been having to play catch-up in the last couple of years. And we really feel like those students getting all of their content in the seventh grade is really gonna drastically help us in the future. Another thing that I think is wonderful, coming from, I taught seven years in another district that had two to three feeder schools to the high school. We never got to talk to the elementary or the middle school teachers, and I just feel blessed that, that we get to talk and do this vertical alignment. And we had our vertical alignment PLC yesterday, and I think really good things are gonna come out of that. We're gonna work together to get what we feel like students should know as exit criteria, as, as we had talked about for each grade level, and all work together for that. And so I think that's just wonderful, that we all have the opportunity to, to meet and get to talk K through twelve, and, and most schools don't get to do that. So I think that's a really good thing, but that's all.
I'm Laura Cooley, and I'm representing the social studies department of the high school, which consists of myself and Tom Asbury and Matt Walls. And I'm gonna keep this very brief. Part of the reason why is because compared to all the other types of assessments that are done in all the different content areas, we've got one. And it's taken care of at the end of the ninth grade year. And so for me, anyway, teaching upper-level classes, it's kind of really nice to be able to go in-depth and not really have to focus on getting content covered for a test, hoping I'm getting content covered for the rest of my life. But anyway, I've averaged. As far as the assessment that I referred to, all US History students in high school take an end-of-course exam. And it's, it's a multiple-choice test. It's, as far as the types of questions that are asked, some of them are knowledge-based, so they're content-specific as far as names or terms or events. Another type of questions asked are application-based questions where they are given information and then asked to answer questions based on the information. And then there's also analysis, as far as analyzing political cartoons or primary sources such as quotes or documents, et cetera. And those last two types of questions in particular is what we're trying to focus on as far as, as far as our assessment results and our next steps. And we're trying to do that primarily through formative assessment activities. Things such as multiple-choice question practice as far as strategies for answering multiple-choice questions effectively, using bell ringers, introductory activities at the beginning of class that encourage higher-order thinking, that's required to be able to tackle some of the document-based questions and graphs and charts that they're, they're asked to answer questions about. And then as far as next steps, and this kind of ties into things that were set at the elementary level as far as literacy. Even though we don't have specific state or national standards so far, dealing with social studies, the common core has an element that is specific to social studies and science. And so we are working on, and we need, that's one thing that we would like to, to work on some more, is using and developing access to primary source documents that we can use in formative assessments, doing that deeper reading or close reading that's necessary to be able to answer text-based questions. We're also wanting to try to use more hands-on activities to try to engage students more in social studies. And then also as far as, as far as, I guess, kind of working on organizational skills and also the, the literacy skills, working on more test prep strategies and note-taking strategies within our courses. So that's it. Like I said, it's gonna be very short.
Wow, I really got the good chair tonight, all of that. I'm Erica King, and I'm representing the English department. And I would tell you, everybody's, I'm gonna try, and else I'll forget somebody. They'll be mad at me tomorrow. I represent Ms. Barbara Friend, she teaches freshman English. And Ms. Tiffany Williams teaches seniors and some sophomores. And, and Ms. Casson at the eighth grade level is wonderful. And Sherry Lane, she teaches seventh grade English. And Mr. Petrie has one sophomore group that he teaches. I have primarily all the, well, I have all the juniors and then one group of sophomores this year. So we have lots of things going on in the English department, mainly because things keep changing in writing especially. We have a writing plan that we've been drafting, and we were lucky enough to actually get to spend some time in vertical planning with the elementary teachers. And we had great conversations, and we've, we've kind of worked together in thinking through what writing should look like from K through twelve. And so we, they have a writing plan, and we, we've kind of made sure that we're on the same page in terms of what's gonna happen in elementary school and when they get to the high school. Hopefully, it'll be a seamless kind of process to transition so that, that we're, we're kind of staying on that same page. And we, we have a draft of our writing plan, and we're waiting to put it to the council because just, was it last week, I think? We got the email from the commissioner that constructive response has been removed from state assessment. And so we now need to deal with that at the school level because even though it's removed from state assessment now, we don't know how the new assessment that's coming in a couple of years will look. And so it's probably not prudent to just say, oh, we don't need to do that anymore. Well, and not only is it not prudent in terms of testing, it's not prudent in terms of that's not specific for students. It's just not prudent. So, so we're looking at, we're looking at how to, to put that into place so that we continue to help our students be able to, to do constructive response and to read and think so that they're prepared for the world. And so we're gonna add something, the council's gonna talk about that first, and then we'll add that to our writing plan so that we make sure that we're handling that. What we have recommended as an English department is that we would do constructive response as a part of instruction in our classrooms throughout the year, when we can give students timely feedback and the constructive, it would be a part of the learning process and not just a checkmark, okay, we did that assessment and it's, it's done. But that students would learn from the, the process all year long. So that's what we're thinking about and looking at right now. But we, we're gonna finalize the writing plan after the council discusses what they want to do with constructive response. Our on-demand writing is really an area of concern for us. And again, I think that part of the issue with that is change. The fact that, that the assessment switched last year abruptly from testing seniors at the end of their senior year to we tested sophomores and juniors. You know, kind of, I think they let us know that change September-ish. And, you know, so it really is, it was kind of a very sudden shift in how the assessment happened last year. And the other thing that plays into that is there was a shift in the focus from, in the modes of writing even that were expected of students. That shifted as well. And so we're working really hard with released items and the new material and the new standards and the new modes of writing to make sure that students are more, much more prepared for on-demand as it looks now because that is different from what it looked like in the past, and it is a different group of students. So hopefully, hopefully, students will be more prepared for that. We, Mr. Belcher asked us to think about gap students and how we could help improve scores for gap students in both reading and writing. And we've, the main thing that our, our discussion went toward were things that you guys said, and the fact that students who are hungry and students who are tired, you know, it's really hard to concentrate on diagramming a sentence when your belly's run one. And so, so some of those things are things that, that we need to think more about how we can help those students. And the other thing that we talked about was to help students be self-aware and to help them be able to assess what they're doing and to look at their, their writing and their, their skills and to say, I need to, how can I improve? Because part of being better is learning to, to self-assess. And that's something that a lot of students really struggle with. So we, we talked about using formative assessments and peer review and, and a lot of those kinds of strategies to help those students to be able to assess and to maybe become more intrinsically motivated. Because that really is, is what helps students to overcome obstacles is, is a motivation that comes from within. We have, with our PLAN scores, we have looked, we, we took the PLAN test that they took in September, is it September? I think, in September. And I gave the test again to my group of sophomores, the same test. And then we deconstructed it. We looked at, I grouped the, the test by skills. And then we looked at those skills, and then we looked at their answers, what they said in September, what they said now, and, and did they get it right now and miss it then, or did they miss it both times? And so we had a lot of discussion on that, and, and we looked at the rules, the grammar, you know, whatever applied. And so I taught many lessons every day. And then after that, today, they took a new plan from like an old one. So it was a, it was a new, fresh one, so I can see if maybe they improved. But we did that today, so I can't tell you for sure, hopefully. And, and everyone in the English department who has the sophomore group is gonna do that same kind of deconstruction with them. And then we'll be doing that with the Kaplan test with the juniors. We'll be doing the same kind of process with them so that they get the same kind of feedback and analysis to, to think through what they're doing. And Mr. Belcher had another question, I think it was, how will we measure our success? And, and hopefully, we'll see success through formative assessment and summative assessment. And ultimately, next year, we'll see improvement with, with this, with the assessment. But, you know, if we, it's really, if we're really successful, we'll see, we'll know that before then because we'll see it in our classrooms. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Belcher.
I guess the one thing, all right, I go first. The one, the one item that as, as you guys went around that I just want to say is I applaud the honor that you bring to your profession, each and every one of them. I'll give away my past college when I say that one of their famous sayings was, "Leaders are here." That's what I see. In terms of the instructional supervisors' report, I think you've heard our agenda tonight. If you were listening closely, we've got quite a bit of work to do. But we're also in such good shape. But what I mean is that Belcher and I have a lot of responsibility in trying to provide for you. And the thing that I'm hearing is professional development. And that's kind of the thing that we have already kind of keyed in on. And it's, we're in the same shape as these teachers are. We're trying to do more with, with less. And we're trying to also provide specific PD, just like they're trying to differentiate for their students in a time where we're trying to do more for less. But leaders are here, and, and we've been drawing upon you guys. And then also creative ways that we can do that. So that's probably the instructional supervisors' report. You have heard our agenda. And in terms of professional development, it's, that's our focus. And I've said this in meetings before, pray for us. We're in the same shape you are, just now trying to serve, serve you. And it's, it's tough, and we're gonna do the very best we can.
What you have before you is the comprehensive district improvement plan. Like Mr. Belcher said, you saw me, as the teachers were speaking, I have made all kinds of notes, okay? As they were talking of things for professional development we need to look at and to provide for you. And some of those things are mentioned within that. The only changes would be related to the data and what they have mentioned in their discussion. One thing is the professional development. We are looking at flexible professional development to where these teachers will have like six hours potentially to where they can do more content-specific. I feel yesterday was a very good day for us professional development-wise, but they need more, and we need to help them to better serve our children. And, and that was one of the biggest changes to this district improvement plan was trying to incorporate the flexible PD so that these teachers can be better served. And I think that is pretty much all I have to say. And I will just want to say, I am so proud of you all. You all are awesome. I've worked with these guys. Love you all because you have my child. And I about teared up, and I about teared up when they were talking too, because I know you work so hard. And we are so blessed to have you in this district, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Just, just something before, board members may have some questions or wanted to share some, some points. I'd just like to go over a few points and, and kind of sum up what's been said tonight. I was amazed that it seems like each time the microphone passed from individual to individual, you thought the most important subject in our entire curriculum was what you taught. I would hope so. I would hope that regardless what it is that you teach is most important, and you feel that it's most important. that it's most important. Working hard was mentioned and something I'd like to point out, not only are the districts that received this honor of districts of distinction working hard, many of the school districts of the 174 are working hard. I think we would all attest to that. So, we have to say, "Okay, what makes this district different?" Here's some of the points that I'd like to make regarding that because Ms. Wells mentioned coaching. I'm sure that those young ladies that you coach, if I line up on the baseline, I'll work just as hard as them, but they'll probably outrun me to the other baseline, probably every time. And I'll try to work just as hard as they do, but what makes it kind of different here? Some of the things that were mentioned here and more rigor, higher expectations, analyzing data, vertical alignment, mastery learning. Just about everything that was mentioned aside from helping students remove barriers to close those achievement gaps dealt with one variable and that's ourselves or the teacher in the classroom because that's the only thing we have 100% control over is the teacher in the classroom. Mom and dad send us the best they have, the best they have to offer, the best raw material. And we try to improve that raw material to the best of our ability. And we try to measure them and we, each of you, when you say, "What's different from how hard that these other districts are working or the staff members or the teachers in the other districts?" Each of you are like Olympic athletes, but instead of trying to shave tenths of a second or one thousandths of a second off, from bell to bell, you're trying to be more productive between the time that bell rings to start class and the time that bell rings to stop class. And I noticed two guiding questions that is much different than in most districts. Number one, how can we help make students more successful? That was one of the overriding guiding points or questions. How can we make them more successful, whether it's on the state assessment or whether it's not? Because the second overriding principle was, what's best for students? And again, that's ultimately what we're trying to do in the end is what is best for these students and trying to help them with that. Finally, the last thing that was mentioned several times was blessed and we are blessed. And something that's mentioned each and every opening day within our school district is that hopefully, the goal of each and every staff member that we have is for the individuals in our community and the six other school districts that send their sons and daughters and grandsons and granddaughters to our school district is that they look forward to the day that that student is in your classroom. When those individuals watch this program or are made aware of how much focus and attention you're trying to give to every second of instruction in trying to improve their child, that's the reason as to why this district has a waiting list. And for that, I thank you. It's where we want to send our children. That dedication, someone mentioned ESS. Yes, we pay some teachers for ESS, but I promise those viewers and those in the audience are well aware, we have far more staff members staying late assisting students that aren't in the ESS program. And we're certainly thankful for those, appreciate the administrators working to improve that. But the Board of Education, these five members here, this is expected as far as our level of success because the community expects this and that's something that helps with our students. Instead of the norm or thinking, "What's the least amount of work that I can do to get by with a certain desired grade in this class?" The focus is, my friends are competing at a high level, not in just an extracurricular event, but in the classroom. And it's kind of like that old axiom, iron sharpens iron. And we've heard from staff members, something I need to do publicly is thank Mr. Johnson and Don Rowe, Mr. Garris for help trying to remove those barriers to help it close those achievement gaps. But we do have some students in the audience and I'm so sorry, I apologize in advance for putting you on the spot, but if any of you would like to share anything or have any thoughts about just the normal school day, the expectations, or your thoughts about staff or students or what your expectations are of the school district if they're being met, please share them because this is all, the whole purpose of tonight, not only to showcase vertically what we're trying to do to improve, but is to be about continuous improvement, to make sure that this district is just a little bit better for your kid brother or kid sister than it maybe was for you. And hopefully, in a few years, when you come back here within this area and you have your children, that we can make it even better for them. Any comments that anyone would like to add?
Well, I'm Frankie Doherty. I just wanna say that, I mean, I could've left when Ms. Scott or Ms. Prater started teaching, but I didn't want to because I love every teacher that spoke and I wanted to hear what they had to say. So, I think, sorry. But I think that says something, you know, about the school system alone, that a student who has homework, you know, would want to stay here and listen to their former teachers speak because they just love them that much. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Board members.
I taught for 32 years and taught many of you. Hold up your hands if you were, uh-huh. And I won't ask further, I taught your mothers and fathers, but I probably did. But I feel I should apologize to you all. I don't know whether you learned anything from me or not. In my, in my classes, or education classes, these strategies that you all were talking about were not even mentioned. I don't know, I always took a crossword puzzle to my education classes. I'm ashamed to admit it, but I did because they were that dull. They were that uninteresting. And I have always thought that teachers are born, not made, and I still think there's a lot of that in us. But I'm amazed at the changes in education and I'm even more aware of them. This is a wonderful, wonderful idea. I don't know whose idea it was, it was a great idea because it has certainly been informative. I'm not sure I could even be certified to teach now, but I'm so proud to be serving on a board that has such wonderful, wonderful people working. You make us look so good. And I'm so proud of all of you, I really am.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, I guess. I've had, my oldest daughter graduated from Pikeville and she's a professional blogger. She gets paid to blog, believe it or not. That's, you know, she was also asked this week, she got an email, was asked to speak, public speaking on what she's doing and about her blog and things like that. And they asked her, "How much will you, or how much does it cost for you to come to do that?" She goes, "I don't know, I've never charged anybody to do that. I've always done that because I love that, that part of it." But also, I have another daughter that's getting ready to graduate. And as I sit here, listen, listening to y'all tonight, the first thing that came to my mind was very, very impressive that my children, you all got to teach my children. And when we look at all the children that we have in our school system, our grade school or high school, you know, I care for all of them over there. We're talking a lot about the gap children tonight and, you know, that's not something that you all look at this group and we're gonna do everything for this group, but this group, let's just get by with this group and let's not worry about this group. You are not doing that. You're saying this group is as important as that group. And when you're looking at a child, when we throw them in the corner or we put them out or whatever we do with that, that affects them for the rest of their lives. And I know it's something that I'm very passionate about and I know Mr. Green, I've talked to him about it and I get, sometimes I carry on a little bit more than maybe that I should, but every one of those children over there are as important as what the other child is. Now, sometimes I'll look at my child because it's my child and I'll say, "My child's the most important one there." But some of the things that you all said tonight, and I know Mr. Green said some things, but you all said pride, passion, prepared, opportunities, creative, change, and enhance. Now, there's a lot of other things, but when you talk about Pikeville High School, Pikeville Grade School, elementary, whatever you want to, that's what's, that's what makes us different. That's why the things that Mr. Green said, parents want to come to this school system because of this, that, or something. This is another reason that we want to bring our children to this school system because it's not like any other school system around here, not like any other school system in the state. You all care and it's in your hearts and you can tell it's in your hearts and that's what counts. You can get in here and do book learning all day, like you were talking about coaching. You could go out here and coach, but if you don't care about those kids, what good is it? And it's not about the best kid or the worst kid or what, it's about the whole, all of it. And that's what we do different, we care about all those. And so, I don't know, you know, I know I've talked more than I should there, but, you know, I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart and I know that's for me and my wife and this community for what you all are doing is special. And I know you do a lot of, lot of hard, long hours and hard work and you don't get paid for that. A lot of times you might think that nobody cares, but that's the furthest thing from the truth. You know, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you all do, for our children, our community.
I'd like to thank you for all that y'all do and we're gonna have to step up as a board to help furnish for you all what you need to work with. And that's my, your challenge for me is that we have to come up with a way to provide for you all.
Maybe we can sell cupcakes.
Whatever it takes.
I thought it was very professional, very informative and now the information's out there, everybody's seen you on TV and they'll be calling you.
You're a star.
Ms. Prater may have you do some of her shows. You've been very informative. I enjoyed it very much. Thank you for coming.
They do, they do.
The cats have a bag here now.
I wanted to thank you all for what you said about educating the whole child and caring about what's going on in their home lives and things because I think that's so important. They're dealing with so many things that we didn't deal with when we were in high school. There's just so much going on in their lives and I think that caring about them and caring about what's going on in their life and addressing those issues also helps you meet them educationally with what they're doing in the classroom. And I think that's so important and it makes such a huge difference. So, I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you. We need to move on to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, they want to keep you over here.
Are we letting you know?
You folks are welcome to stay, but if you'd like, we'll move on with this. Rest of the meeting, but thank you again for your time. We appreciate you.
As a matter of fact, we'll move down to the action consent items presented here under items three through, A to H. If anything needs to be removed or discussed further, we'll pull those out. If not, I'll make a motion to have someone to approve the action consent item as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Miss Collins makes the motion. Mr. Taggitt would second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we'll move down to the action discussion items. And we've gone over the comprehensive district improvement plan, Mr. Green.
We just gave a motion to approve those tonight.
Have to make a motion. Okay, we'll take another motion to approve the comprehensive district improvement plan, comprehensive school improvement plan as presented here tonight. Miss Collins makes the motion. Mr. Peters second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved. And other business?
No.
No other business brought for the board? Information review items?
We don't have any at this time, but I do need to request that you move to closed session concerning property acquisition or possible property acquisition.
Need to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss property acquisition?
Make that motion.
Mr. Taggitt, you have a second.
Second.
Miss Collins makes the second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So moved, we'll go into closed session.